And there's still the timeline is in place and the clock is ticking on the to comply with what's requested by the council?
That is correct.
And our path moving forward has not changed?
No.
Thank you. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I know this is on the record, but if we could do it one more time, the clock started on, was it?
April thirteenth.
Thirteenth. One hundred and twenty days from April thirteenth, and the city has a right at any time to perform any type of inspection? Is that correct?
We would still want to get consent of the owner, as we did before. But they're working with us, and I know Brian has been in communication with their attorney. So I assume if anything is accomplished, that would be a natural request, would be to go out and see the property and see what's been done.
And I think part of the discussion we had regarding that is so that it doesn't go on one hundred and twenty days and there's nothing done. So I'm not sure if we'd like to maybe schedule, you know, I don't know, once a month, see where they're at.
I can certainly ask Mr. Lindsay to make contact with the owner's attorney in that time period.
I'm not sure, was that Counselor Johnson that, or maybe it was you, Counselor Biondich? I'm not sure, but we had discussed that about just not letting it go the whole one hundred and twenty days and that we could kind of go in and inspect as they were performing work. So I don't know.
Again, I think we'd have to get their permission or court order. So again, if the council wants to direct Mr. Lindsay to make contact on that type of a basis, we can certainly be doing that. We could request to be able to go in as they're doing.
I think I'll bring that forward to the committee of the whole for next week, and we can discuss that as a council, if that's okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I think if I, I can tack on to that a little bit. When Brian was here the last time, he did indicate that, you know, if we wanted to go in there, we need to get permission from the owner. And the owner apparently has, you know, to see what the progress is moving forward. But, you know, that clock is ticking since April the thirteenth, and if it's not, if there's noncompliance, there's that trigger mechanism in place to use court action as a result of that. So, yeah, if we could maybe bring that up at the committee of the whole meeting, add that to the committee of the whole agenda, please, Britt, and then we'll feather that out a little further. Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Any questions or comments from the neighbors? Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions from elected body? None. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item seven point two, the clinic lease. Of course, it's going to be expiring in the next couple of years, and I think we've directed our staff to start negotiations with Essentia and maybe any other interested parties in the acquisition of that property, once we're able to sell it, based upon some encumbrances we have with some funding and some repair work that needs to be done there over time. And I had a chance to pull out that clinic lease this last week and read through it last night before this meeting today. And the lease, if you haven't seen it, is pretty straightforward, and I think that this is something that we're working on in our negotiation process. So Britt and John, do we have, are we, we've made notice of, and has there been a meeting with Mr. Stone and his staff? I know there was one scheduled and it was canceled, and I think there's another email asking for some more information. Is that correct?
We're trying to schedule a meeting still.
Okay, thank you. So that's still ongoing, trying to schedule a meeting with the Essentia staff to get ahead of the game with respect to the clinic lease, which expires in a couple of years. Any questions, comments about that right now? Okay, seeing none, thank you. We'll move to item seven point three, which is the rental court ordinance, and I'll take the tennis racket and the ball and pitch it over there to John Sullivan, our planning and development coordinator. John?
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission met on Monday, May second, and we talked about the rental ordinance, specifically the public hearings that are upcoming, that the city council passed a resolution for setting those up. And those will not be here, where most planning commission meetings are. They will be at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center at the following dates: May 26, 2022, which will be for all interested city residents; June 23, 2022, which will be for landlords and interested parties; June 30, 2022, for tenants and interested parties. Of course, if one of these public hearings doesn't work for somebody and they don't view themselves as one of those groups, they could attend any one of the meetings, but that's what each one of the meetings is geared for. So other than that, we didn't take any action on the rental ordinance. We just updated the committee on the format and the location, and I think they're excited to roll up their sleeves and sit next to you in the, at the public meetings. So based on your tennis analogy, I'm going to volley it right back to you there, Mayor.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it very much. And thank you for you and the planning commission for separating this out, you know, to make it a little bit more amenable when we have these meetings to address issues with respect that the public has, and then issues that respect to the landlords has, and issues that's respected attendance have, because this ordinance is going to affect all three. So by parting that out makes it a little easier for us to do that. I appreciate that, John. Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Pam, would you send out meeting invites for those as soon as you can, so I can keep those days clear? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Okay, anything else on the rental court ordinance? Counselor Freely?
Just a quick repeat on the tenants meeting. I missed that date. I'm sorry.
June 30th? June, um, May 26th, June 23rd, and June 30th? Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you very much. Move to item eight, discussion items. Item eight point one, which is the planning and zoning meeting that was held on May 2nd, 2022. Item eight point one A, consider the following variance request from Donald and Joanne Hollenin Family Trust at 805 Eighth Street North, requesting an additional 106 square feet for rear coverage exceeding 30% and adding rain gutters to the building for drainage, which is directed towards the alley. Moved to approve by Counselor Freely. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight point one B, consider the following variance request from Cynthia Ann Bobinski, located at 1304 Eighteenth Street South, for building a six-foot privacy fence on the east and west side of the deck that exceeds the height restriction by three feet. And we have Cindy in the audience this evening, Counselor Biondich.
So moved.
Counselor Biondich moves to approve. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item eight point one C, consider the following variance request from Miners Incorporated Super One, located at 1111 Seventeenth Street South, for placing a 20-foot by 7-foot or a 145-square-foot sign on the west side of the building, where City Coz allows a 64-square-foot sign, resulting in a variance request of 81 square feet. And I know that we are redoing this roadway system on Seventeenth Street to accommodate, and Counselor Bearbow and his committee and our engineering's are looking at making some adjustments to the entrances to that, to Super One. And so part of their overall plan is to make sure that gets accommodated. So that's the request by Super One, which was approved to move forward by our planning and zoning commission, looking for council action.
Moved to approve.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve. Is there support?
Well, support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Bearbow for discussion. Further discussion, Counselor Bearbow.
Mayor and fellow counselors, we do have a meeting tomorrow, right, Britt, at 10 o'clock, with Super One on that Seventeenth Street redo of that roadway and stuff there. Do we need to sit on this sign until then, or we don't need to? Because it's in their parking lot, correct? I believe it's.
It's on their property.
It's just going to be where the old one is, but bigger, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, then I don't have any objection.
Very good. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I had asked John Sullivan this prior to the meeting. I just want to, I guess, for clarification, I just, when I was reading through the planning and zoning minutes, it states that there was a Jennifer Stedett representative for the credit union was present, and I was confused as if it was a credit union or if it was Miners Incorporated Super One. But the credit union is going to be located inside Super One, and so the sign will be actually on Super One's building on the west side, facing 12th Avenue. So just for clarification, because I couldn't understand that, and just wanted to let you know, I don't think that affects anything. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. So it has been moved and supported to approve this variance. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight point two, appoint Dennis Yorzak to the Cable Commission for a three-year term ending December 31, 2024, and I'm assuming there were no other applicants for this position. So Mr. Yorzak is kindly volunteered to continue in this role, as he has for a long period of time. Moved by Counselor Freely. Is there support?
Well, support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Biondich. Further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, I brought this up before. I would like to see us start appointing these people who have outlived their nine-year or their three appointments to one year, so that we can be advertising annually to get some folks that might be interested in. So that's just my suggestion. I will continue to bring it up every time we appoint someone who's been on a city commission for, as Mr. Yorzak put, "forever." So, thank you.
Yeah, maybe if it's amenable, we'll put that on the committee home meeting for discussion, maybe have that policy in place or make a little adjustment to that. Thank you. Pam, you put that on there? Thank you. Okay, item eight point three, is adopt a resolution to, we vote on that? We did? No, we didn't? We did? Good, thank you. Item eight point three, adopt a resolution to hire Don Scott, D-A-W-N Scott, as the administrative assistant to, as recommended by staff.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Barnzelli. Is there any further discussion? This is a replacement as a retirement, so thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, committee reports. Item nine point one, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on May 3, 2022, and we'll turn this portion of the city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Thank you. On May 3, 2022, at the committee of the whole meeting, we had Matt Reed from SCH present to discuss the bids that were received for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus improvement project. It was moved and supported to approve awarding the bid for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus improvement project to Magni Construction in the amount of $519,000, $519,000, that was in $600.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Bearbow?
Yeah, I hate to say this, but I am getting really tired and sick of the MPCAs' mandates.
Unfunded mandate.
Unfunded mandates. This cannot continue to happen. We need to start moving stuff, and this should be done, I believe. We have some power through Rams to get stuff to the legislatures to stop this stuff, and I'll be more than happy to have you to bring this up at one of our Rams meetings, because this affects not just City of Virginia, but the whole seven-county region, what they're doing to all these mandates. They can't expect the cities to raise their levies once they're already been done, when they mandate this stuff, and it's just really making me angry, because we cannot afford as a city to continue raising our taxes to our residents to fund these unfunded mandates. Thank you for listening.
Oh, thank you. And as president of the Rams, I'm sure you can address it at the Rams board meeting. Tomorrow, there's a mayor's meeting sponsored, hosted by Rams, and I'll bring it up there as well. Now, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine point two, actually, nine point one.
Nine point one B.
I'm sorry. You go.
Thank you. It was moved and supported to adopt the resolution authorizing entering into a professional services agreement with SCH for construction management services for the Virginia wastewater treatment plant phosphorus improvement project.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Well, support, Mayor.
Yeah, support by Counselor Bearbow. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Matt Reed also mentioned that the contractor for the 2021 street improvement project is coming forward with a change order due to increase in prices for, by two minutes. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution approving the change order number two for the 2021 street infrastructure improvement project for an increase of $62,186.68.
Looking for a reluctant motion to approve?
Also moved, Mayor.
Moved by Counselor Bearbow. Is there support? Or support by Counselor Johnson? Is there any further discussion? Counselor Bearbow?
Yeah, this is an unfortunate thing with all the stuff going on with supply chains and with fossil fuels and stuff. The oil that's needed to make laptop has gone up $8.20 a ton. This is a huge increase for us that we didn't count on. We have the money, we're okay, but it's another one of these things with everything going on in the country that is going to hurt the cities in the long run, because we're going to see more of this.
Well, we hope not a lot more, so thank you. Okay, thank you, Britt. Did we vote? Or we don't need to yet, because we still have more conversation. Counselor Biondich?
Thank you. And as always, where does the money come out of? Is it the general fund, or is this allocated in another area?
Would you turn your light on and repeat that once again, please, Sherri?
Sure, Mayor, Council. This is of a street maintenance, and I budgeted $120,000.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Biondich. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Was moved and supported to award the quotes to Braun InterTech in the amount of $23,255 for the geotechnical evaluation required for the Public Safety Center area.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Well, support, Mayor.
Support by Counselor Bearbow. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Discussion was held regarding the golf course restaurant lease. It was moved and supported to allow Northern Divide until midnight on May 15 to approve the proposed lease. I do believe Colleen has an update for us.
Hello again. So, Council, today it came to our attention that there is an attachment to the lease that describes the portion of the building that is being leased out, and there was an error on the attachment. I don't know if the council has seen the copy of the lease, but it included the pro shop that it, I don't know if you can see it, I just kind of colored mine in.
Mm-hmm.
It's basically a lease, and it was circled in red. Well, the red area included the pro shop, which is not what was contemplated. So at this time, we have a couple of options. Number one, the council could look at rescinding the lease and getting that portion sorted out. I believe Mr. Lindsay had a conversation with the prospective tenant's attorney, but they weren't able to resolve the issue today. It just came up today. The other option would be to try and propose some alternative terms. The concern I have is if we don't rescind this, this is basically giving them more of an area to let, to lease out than was contemplated. And there are other ways we could approach this, but an offer is valid until accepted. We're free to rescind the offer at any time. So that's my recommendation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Before we go to Counselor Johnson, I have one question. I know that the Northern Divide uses the pro shop in the wintertime for large parties and gatherings, but not in the summertime. So when the golf season opens or a week, when they're trying to prepare, you know, they don't use it, you know, from, usually from April to the end of September, first part of, middle of October, maybe not until November. So, so your recommendation is to do what?
I would rescind the offer at this time to allow Mr. Lindsay and counsel for the tenant, prospective tenant, time to just sort that out. I think it would be, as you've mentioned, Mayor, there's ways to do that, where the city would be guaranteed use of that property while under the terms of the lease, but we want to make sure that that language is in the lease. And if it's accepted as is, basically, the city's giving this entire space to the Northern Divide, and, you know, there aren't any guarantees of use. So you want to make sure that that gets clarified. So I don't think it's a major issue. I mean, I think it's something that should be worked out rather quickly, but since it just came to my attention today that that was included in error, we need to make some, take some action, whether it be to propose something in an alternative way and rescind the prior offer, or just go ahead and rescind the offer and allow the attorneys to talk about how to resolve that.
And so you think this is potentially, potentially resolvable before May the 15, midnight?
I would hope so, Mayor, but I can never predict.
Yeah, well, thank you. Hope so is a good enough answer for me at this point in time. Counselor Johnson?
So I'm not, I don't feel like it was an error. I, they use that more than we do during the year, when it comes to what they're doing in that space, because the pro shop is only open, basically, what, middle of April to At this point, my intention would be to go move forward with what we have and then do an addendum to the lease afterwards. This is going to drag out another two weeks. We're going to give them another two weeks, and they're going to argue, and this is another one of those things that it's never-ending. It's just like, yeah, a lot of things. So at this point, I'm not, I'm ready to accept it the way it is and do an addendum after we have an agreement that can define that space later. We need to make sure we're moving forward, and this is, to me, is a step backwards. Thank you, Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Likely be looking for a motion to move in that direction, but let's have some discussion first. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I was just going through my drawer to see if I could find. That was an actual handout that we had. I thought I studied that, and the pro shop was not in the red line that I, that we received. I did not believe it was. But that was a, Brian gave us, because it was confidential, so I, I think we gave all that confidential material back, or I even, or probably put it in the shredding material. But I'm pretty sure, I don't know, does anyone have a copy of the one that they had in red outline? I'm pretty sure when I reviewed, can you?
Yes, Pam, thank you.
Is that the one that would have been handed out to us, Pam, on our desks?
No, this was the one that came from the engineering department that was updated.
The lease, the lease?
The drawing with the red, yeah.
Oh, excuse me, email it? Please, please do that. Thank you. I mean...
Would this be the same one, or is it different than the one that we received on our desk when we were in closed session?
It was in the package, I believe, last week.
Well, I think it's just a clarification of what space they're leasing. I don't think it affects.
Well, I think that goes to the heart of the matter, though, of why they want to change. It was under Exhibit A. There was one picture of Exhibit A, and then there was the new red line, outline Exhibit A. And the old one had the bar and the kitchen up to the fireplace, and the new one, I don't believe the new one included the pro shop that I had on my desk. So I don't know what you're referencing, but here it is.
You know, I think that what Counselor Johnson indicated, as you look at the new updated version, to move it forward and, you know, I mean, I'm only speaking for myself here, that it is, on the face of it, it's an easily, is easily resolved by putting that addendum in there, making sure that's clarified in there, and moving forward with the current offer that we have on the table. So it just, it just not going to delay things too far. And for me personally, whether they're leasing part of the pro shop or not, or whether they lease it for three months or four months or not, I don't think the offer's changed at all, and because they're using it a portion of the year. So, I mean, I think it's an easily, easily resolved thing, but let's wait for the email to come back, and you can take a review of it, and then we'll, we'll discuss it further and hopefully come up with some kind of a motion to direct staff and our, and council to move forward.
This, the email we received does have the pro shop outlined. I did not recall seeing the pro shop outlined in the handout that was on our desks, that was actually hand-given to us and not emailed to us. But I would agree, the same premise is, you know, we're negotiating right now a lease that we've already put forward, but I understand why you're recommending that, but if it could be amended or an addendum added, see, I don't see Exhibit A on here, or eight point, is A 2.1? It actually had an addendum on there, written on there. So I don't know if this is the same or not. Anyway, based on that, I'll let the discussion continue. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, recommendation from our council. Would, so would we move forward with just putting an addendum to allow you to continue to negotiate that portion of it, you know, as an addendum to our offer? Is that what, is that amenable?
The concern is that the Northern Divide could accept this offer as written and then claim that space and.
Kick us out, basically.
Kick us out of it. I mean, that's the problem, and that's the concern that I'm raising. Certainly, it would be the goal to, as quickly as possible, resolve that issue. The other problem is if we, we later, they accept it as is, and we try and amend it to allow us access, they may decide to ask us for additional funds or a reduction in rent. I mean, it puts us in a difficult position for leveraging an agreement. We're in a weaker position. So the only way around this is to really, at this point, to rescind the offer before it's accepted, get a change made, and then get that put forth to the other side so that they can review it and hopefully accept it.
Okay, so that's your recommendation?
That is my recommendation, and that's Mr. Lindsay's recommendation as well.
Okay.
Question, Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Paulson?
Could we move forward minus the Exhibit A and add the Exhibit A after we correct Exhibit A?
We certainly could, but it, right now, it's incorporated into the lease. It's, and that makes it, it's incorporated by reference, which makes it part of the contract. So that's my concern and Brian's concern, that you're basically pulling in additional space that you didn't contemplate to lease to them and giving them control over.
And who outlined this red space in red? Which attorney?
I did not.
Our engineering department did, our community development department did, because the former lease had clause in there that during the time when we're not using the pro shop, you can use it. That didn't get transferred into this new lease.
But that wasn't the, that actually was not the outline of what Eric Honklin's original draft lease was, was only the bar, the restaurant, and that little L shape. That was it. So this drawing is not, that was not part of the original lease agreement.
The next page is what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's Exhibit, that's Exhibit A original, right. So this, this one, who drew, who drew up the red lines?
Engineering department, because that is what they're using during the winter months. The top part's the freezer, where it says men's locker room has been made into a cleaning supply room for them. They use the pro shop in the winter.
So why wasn't that defined in the lease? Why, why didn't the lease match the engineering diagram and the specific, specific, whatever? Specific, I'm not even going to butcher that. Why did not, why did it not describe that during the months, then this is the red outline in red, and in the summer months, that maybe dotted line, or you make a whatever, another line? They're not habitating that. Why, I mean, why can't we draft a lease that, that makes sense? We've been working on this a long time. I mean, who's not communicating with whom here?
Well, when, when, before Northern Divide took over, there was something in the lease that allowed them to use it when the golf course was, pro shop was closed, they could use that for their parties and things of that nature. And then when the Northern Divide took over, that was left out of the lease, a portion of it, for whatever reason. reason. And now, which just have been discovered, the discrepancy probably primarily because it was pointed out, there was a question of what space is actually being leased. The engineering department went and take a look at it. One thing led to another, so that's where we're here right now. So, Counselor Johnson?
And the one Pam just sent us doesn't match the one that's in the actual, there, there's two other red boxes. So, I will move that we rescind the current offer and start, and I'll start with that one. I move to rescind the current lease offer to Northern Divide.
Okay, moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
All support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Beyondich for discussion, for the discussion. Counselor Beyondich?
All right, it's taking so long.
No, no, good. No, no, let's, we have to do, we have to vet this out.
So, as long as we're talking about this again, and the box is drawn for the pro shop, and we've talked about them using the pro shop in the off-season, so if we just go back to the rest of the actual dining area and not, if there's gonna be a discussion on cost of using, that we're changing this, then I would say we, we take out that in the winter months, that other portion is not used. It's not in the lease at all, period. We're going right back to the drawing board on this, and I feel like we actually had this done and ready to go, and it was, and I, I'm not sure what happened, but it's very confusing and frustrating.
Well, I think by, by, by rescinding the lease as recommended by council, we could add then the, before they accept the offer that we had, if they do or not, well, we just rescind it, we make that amendment on, on the space, and then, then we re-present it. Is that correct? That seems to be a pretty simple thing to do. So, the motion on the floor by Counselor Johnson is to rescind, based on the recommendation from our, from our staff. That way, we can work on adding that in, in, in the lease language. And there was support for that. And further discussion, Counselor Beyondich?
Thank you. And that would also keep the same timeline that we have for the 15th?
I believe, I believe that we could have that done and presented to them by that time, right?
That seems reasonable, Mayor. I believe so.
Yes.
And is... It's not a complicated change. It's basically adjusting a paragraph in there.
So, is that something before, I mean, that can be sent to us as soon as it's done and it's presented to the council?
Certainly, council, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, so, thank you, Counselor Beyondich. And so, that's pretty clear, right? We've done that. Thank you for the question. So, it has been moved and supported to rescind the offer as recommended by our, our staff, and to work toward putting additional language in the lease with respect to the, the space that is being discussed today. So, Counselor Johnson?
No, my, Mayor, my, or, my motion is simply to rescind the current lease. That's it. Nothing extra.
Okay, so, Counselor Johnson's motion was to rescind the lease, and it was seconded by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion in that regard? Counselor Bearbou, then over to Counselor Paulson.
I have an issue, I have a big issue with this, okay? We put into motion a, a resolution, or whatever you wanna call it, to start this timeframe. Now, on my perspective, you need to start this timeframe over, because you're pulling the rug right out from under the people that are going to sign the potential new, new lease with an addendum. That's not fair to them. The 15th has gotta be extended, because we can't just pull the rug out with, with our rescinding of motions and this. We could do that anytime we want as a council and stuff, and that just makes me very angry, because then we're not working in good faith with the people who wanna have, or maybe have an amendment. A prorated for that space in the wintertime would be much better, and have them lease that portion in the winter months, because it's gonna be six and six, basically. Six months for the golf course, six months for the restaurant, because they use it in the wintertime lots for parties. I'll guarantee you that, as I see it. But I can't just pull the rug. You gotta extend the same timeframe. Beyond when we started this, when we gave until the 15th, that was what, a couple of weeks ago? We did that, I can't remember. You need, you need to be courteous and extend that timeframe to work on this. That's my, that's my thought, okay? I, I can't see just, we could do that with any organization that uses our space then. I mean, that's stupid.
Yeah, so, it's, it's not a convoluted change. It's just a, more of a legal formality moving forward to, to reset a certain portion of that. Should be easily adjusted and resolved to move toward presenting it back to the, to the leasing. So, they, they've used it for all this period of time. We know they've used it. They've always used it. I think that we just want that identified, the space that's being used in the lease. And I would support an increase, re-prorated, cost associated with that at all. We're just making a simple change into what space they're leasing for the amount of money that we're having. So, the motion from Counselor Johnson is to simply rescind, was supported by Counselor Beyondich. Further discussion, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna ask, we've modified contracts in the past. Is there a reason that we cannot modify this contract? Why this contract has to be rescinded? Because we've, in contract negotiations, we've just modified contracts in the past. So, why do we need to rescind this specific contract instead of just make a modification?
I think I would say, Counselor Paulson, it involves a key term, which is, it's like the amount of rent, the space being listed. And again, I don't know that there's gonna be conflict or not, or it can't get easily resolved. But again, you have an offer out there, and the concern that we have is that, basically, you're looking at them having control of a space that you expect to at least have control of for six months of the year.
Sure, and I, and I totally get that.
So, I think it's a key material term that you really wanna have clarified.
I, I think my, my, I wouldn't wanna say hesitation. Well, it is a hesitation, is that we'll be going done and arguing costs per square footage when that was originally possibly estimated within the square footage of our offer that's now on the table. And I do not wanna prolong this. So, I, I just am not sure why we can't just modify the contract, take it back to their attorney, and say, this is our modified contract. You have till the 15th. It's, it's one, it's, it's a, just an outline of the pro shop. I, I just, I can't vote in favor of this, rescinding the entire thing, when it's purely a modification on an exhibit within the lease. That's how I feel. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, any other questions?
Just one, Mayor. Fifteenth, fifteenth, fifteenth of the Sunday, so it gives you basically three days to work this out and get it done. That's not enough time the way attorneys work. Jesus, don't you understand how attorneys work? That's crazy. I've never seen one done in thirty days, when by the time you get the parties together, if they're busy. You gotta extend it to a reasonable original time. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Well, we, yeah, okay. So, the motion is just to rescind, that's Counselor Johnson's motion, and that's supported by Counselor Beyondich. And so, I think it's, it's a matter of, of, of process and procedure that this be done. I mean, they're leasing the entire space now. Their, I can say it publicly, right? Their attorney has indicated that they wanted a clarification on the square footage they're leasing. That's the, we're gonna give them that clarification, that they're leasing that, and in the, in the, in that. So, by making that change and just submitting it to it, you know, it, it's, it's almost like, we made an offer, a formal offer to them, so that offer has to be amended. In order to amend that offer, that offer has to be rescinded to, to amend that. Is that what you're saying, Colleen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, and then it can be easily, you know, that can be changed, and then, and then resubmitted to, to Northern Divide with a clarification of what that lease space is, which includes that golf course portion for a specific period of time during the course of that lease and, and the timeframe that the golf courses are using it. I can't see where this is a difficult thing to do. We just make that change, and then resubmit that, and that's what their attorney's asked for. He's asked for a clarification of what space are, are, are they paying for. And so, we have given them that space to use. They've been using it, and so, no, 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 to say to close it down and not use that space. They have already, well, there's already offer that, that encompasses what they think is what they're using now, and that's what their attorney wanted. He wanted a clarification of the space. If we give that to him, that's fine. So, the motion on the floor is to do that. Now, if you wanna extend it later on, you know, for a few more days or another week, we can do that in a, in a separate motion because of, of the circumstances surrounding this. But right now, we're discussing the motion that's on the floor, which is the, the motion to rescind only, with nothing else. So, that's been moved and supported. Further discussion. Counselor Beyondich?
Thank you. Colleen, when this, if this is rescinded, how soon would the, the updated one, would that be a matter of tomorrow, having the new one to him?
We would do our best to do that, yes. I'd like to keep this moving and keep it on the, on track. You've done a lot of work. I recognize that. I haven't been at all the meetings, but I'm familiar with what's been going on through Brian. So, that would be our goal, be to get that clarified and addressed as quickly as possible. It's, it's really a matter of adding another clause and clarifying the space and who's using what.
So, they have had all this time to look at the lease. We've extended this date already from the original, or from when, when it expired. So, if we have that language to them tomorrow, it is not reviewing a whole new lease and going over it with a fine-toothed chrome. We're just clarifying the space that is in here.
And adding, probably adding a position, a provision as to how that use that the years is shared during the winter months, it's used this way, and during the summer months, it's used this way. Giving us a license to utilize it, because otherwise, you give everything to the tenant.
And that is, that is your recommendation?
Yes.
That we do the, rescind it and get another one to them as soon as possible?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And they're doing it now. It's just not, it's just not outlined in the lease. That's all. Simple, I think, just procedure. So, has been moved and supported to rescind the offer, is, and is moved and supported. Is there any further discussion about that? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Huffy?
Yes.
Bearbou? Greedleep? Paulson?
No.
Beyondich? Johnson?
Aye.
Aaron Zelli?
Motion fails. Does it not? Because it involves money in the lease?
Spending money.
Huh?
For spending city money.
Only for spending money, so then would this motion would pass four to three? It does pass four to three. All right, thank you. All right. Now, I think it's fair for us to, in the, in, 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 in the event that there's a communication issue for a day or two, and it can't be done by the 15th, I can't see any reason why, you know, that, that date can't be extended based upon the discussion we had today, and, and maybe not set a, we set a date or whatever. I think it's, it's prudent for us to give that option in the event that's not, because if, if we make this change and the, the communication doesn't go, get there by the 15th or whatever happens, then, then what happens? You know, then what action are we gonna be taking here? So, your recommendation, Colleen, is?
I would request that you give us at least a week, ten days, something like that. It's not a complicated issue, but you never know with attorneys getting contact with each other, getting in contact with their clients, so.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Johnson?
I would move, we amend the current lease to include, I wrote this down, the intended use as it has, was implied, and it has been used over the years, defining the pro shop as utilized by them October, November, December, January, March, and April as negotiated with Parks and Rec Department based on the golf season. So, we're, we're defining that the Northern Divide will use the space in the pro shop when golf season is not on. And, and those exact dates will have to be negotiated every year based on the weather, I would guess. I mean, this year, we were late, and last year, people were golfing in April, so. And then also, that it would be defined in a different color on the map, that this is the space that's being utilized. And I will stop my motion there so that we can move in steps forward, if that's the desire of the council.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Johnson. So, it has been moved by Counselor Johnson. And before I ask a support, could you just clarify the motion that he has put out on the table, so that the, because, just to clarify for my, for myself?
Yeah, I believe this is the intent, to amend the current lease for the, to amend the current lease for the attended, intended space as it was defined in the previous lease regarding the pro shop and how it is utilized by the tenant as negotiated with the Park and Rec Department when golf sea, when golf season will need it, when it will be used by golf season.
I think that was as clear as my first. So, so, let's just...
I, I don't like the word negotiate with the Park and Rec, but go ahead. Please continue.
Let's do this. Let's, to define the pro shop in the current lease offer, who includes seasonal usage as agreed upon by the Parks and Rec and them, based on the needs of the golf pro.
A motion by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Is there support? Is there support? Motion fails for lack of support. So, all right. Any other motions?
Mayor, let's just do the very simple thing. I think, Colleen and Brian need a little longer timeframe from today's date. Ten days of bringing it into, what, the end of next week? I think there's three left, and, yeah, bring it into next week. I would allow this to, a motion to allow our attorney to negotiate with Northern Divide's attorney up until Friday, the, whatever Friday is.
So, you're asking for a week to ten days, Colleen? So, the motion would be from the, extended from the 15th to the 27th?
Not that far.
That's, it's your twelve days. She's asked a week for ten, she's asked for a week to ten days.
The 20th.
Okay, all right, very good. So, your motion is to extend the motion for the deadline from the 15th of May to the...
Five more days.
From the 15th of?
The 20th.
From the 15th of May to the 20th of May. That's the motion. Is there support for that? Is there support for that motion? Is there support for that motion?
Support for a question.
Support by Counselor Johnson. Question, Counselor Johnson?
What are we negotiating?
We're negotiating to put the addendum into that lease and change that lease to the space, which they're not gonna pay for anyway, because it's already in the original lease.
And I agree with not, with, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm out of...
No, please do, please, please continue, Counselor Johnson.
And I agree with, with that, but that's not the, we haven't given our staff any direction formally on what we need them to negotiate, and, and that's what...
They don't need to negotiate. That's our attorney's job.
But we need to tell Colleen what to do. We're just giving, we're, at this point, we're just extending the, the lease for, or the deadline for five days. We're not telling them to negotiate the space or clarify the space or anything. And, and that's what I, that was the intent of my motion, was to give them some direction, and then the next motion could've been to extend it. But right now, we're just telling them to negotiate, and we've already negotiated what we want. Literally, the other attorney wants it written down, what we all know. Like, that's my understanding of what, what that, what the Northern Divide attorney wants, is he wants in writing, what we've been doing, what is past practice. And that's, but I feel we need to give the attorney specific directions so that they're doing what we wanna do, and we're not opening up a negotiation for everything else. I don't wanna charge them more. I don't wanna do anything else. Just wanna say that it's ours in the summer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. So, this is embarrassing. It's convoluted, but it's a simple solution. Two motions. We have, we've got one, one of our, one motion is to extend it from the 15th to the 20th, motion number one. We act on that. If that passes, motion number two is to direct our, our, our legal council to add that space to the lease, the language in the lease, and then that's the amendment to present. So, I mean, it's, it's just, it's a two-step process. It's simple, in my opinion. Well, we're still on discussion season, this particular motion by Counselor Bearbou. Further discussion, Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I wish it was simple, but it, nothing has been simple with this lease, when it was supposed to be simple from the very beginning of our discussing this lease after we terminated the old one. So, I, I don't, we don't have to negotiate anything. We've already negotiated what we wanted in this lease. The only thing that's the problem is the exhibit, and I don't know what exhibit you call that, Colleen, but it's identified what they're renting, when they're using it in the winter. the winter. So, why can't we just leave the identification in red and just put a clause there that it's only, they're only utilizing that X month and through X month? Why do we have to redefine everything? Because then what we're going to do is get into the weeds with a nego, this is a negotiation strategy, if you ask me. And when we met, we already said, we've already negotiated as a council. We met and said, this is what we want, and this is what we're presenting. They truly are renting that space. It's just not all year round.
And it's not identified in the lease, and that's what you're saying? Just put an addendum in there and move forward?
That's what I've been saying. Modify it and not rescind, that the, the outline of what they're leasing is exactly what they are leasing. It's just not all year long.
Okay.
So, I just, I'm having a really tough time because I know once we say, okay, we're rescinding and da, 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 we're going to go back to the drawing board about square footage and about everything else, identifying this, how much this costs, will they use this locker room? I don't, I think we've already negotiated what we want, and I think we couldn't have been more clear. And this is ident, this identifies what they use, it's just not all year long.
I agree with you.
So, where does that leave us? I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, we have a motion on the floor now by Counselor Bearaboo, and supported by Counselor Johnson for a question.
That's saying negotiate, and we're not negotiating.
Right. So, we have to act on that motion, and then if that, hey, but what happens, then we can ask for a motion about what you're saying, which I agree with. It's a simple solution in that regard. It's, 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 I can't see how, how complicated it is. We're complicating this matter way beyond, you know, what's necessary and what to do so. So, it's been moved and supported by, by Counselor Bearaboo. So, could you read back that motion by Counselor Bearaboo?
Moved by Counselor Bearaboo, supported by Counselor Johnson, to allow the attorney to negotiate a new lease and allow Northern Divide until midnight on May 20th, 2022, to approve the updated lease.
No, that's not what I said. Not at all. I said to extend the timeframe for them to look at that clause, basically, is all we're doing.
It was to negotiate.
And you did say...
Well, I don't mean to negotiate. I'm going to rescind my motion on that because that's, we don't want to negotiate the whole, and Juliana is correct. We don't want to negotiate the whole damn thing again. All we want to do is take that space, divide it so it's equal between the golf course and the, and Northern Divide. It's a seasonal type thing. They're going to each use it basically six months of the year. I don't care what anybody says, but I did not mean it that way. I don't care who says it or what.
Yeah.
I did not mean it that way.
Okay.
I meant to extend the timeframe that Colleen and their attorney has time to make sure they just fix that one part that screwed up.
Then, then maybe you want to narrow your motion to that only, the extension of the timeframe?
Steve to agree to...
Well, I mean, are you rescinding a motion or you are bending your motion?
Rescinding it.
All right. He's rescinding his motion, Counselor Johnson. Okay? Very good. So, thank you very much. So, now we're back to the drawing board. So, I'm looking...
Do we want to word it? That's the question mark.
Pardon?
How do we want to word that? So, Colleen gets some more time, or Brian?
Right, well...
Just fix that section. Three days isn't enough time. That's my point.
Yeah. So, our council, Colleen, if I may, has asked for some additional time from the 15th through the 20th to make the amendment to this lease and moving forward. So, she was, her recommendation was to rescind, we don't, we don't need to do, we don't have to go by that recommendation. Recommendation is, I think, it was pretty clear and pretty simple moving forward, and, you know, from the strict legal interpretation that's we're getting from our legal counsel, we asked for. But I think the intent on our part and the intent on the Northern Divide is to, to move forward with an agreement, and all we need to do is clarify that leased space, right? And that's what you're asking for, Counselor Paulson. So, I'm looking for some...
I would like to make a motion. Okay. So, since we've now, we've officially rescinded the existing lease, we voted on it, and it's rescinded.
Yes.
Okay. So, I would like to make a motion to direct our city attorney to add a clause that defines the months of operation Northern Divide uses, the outlined space, specifically the clubhouse.
Yeah, pro shop, yeah.
Because that's, this clubhouse is what's in question for six months, they use it, six months we use it. So, everything's defined in this red space accurately.
Yeah. So, I think if, if you wouldn't mind, the word to be pro shop because that's...
Pro shop. Oh, what did I say?
The whole thing is the clubhouse, but the pro shop portion of it, of the clubhouse.
It's not a long discussion. Yes, pro shop. Excuse me.
Okay.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay. So, read that motion back, please.
Allow the attorney to clarify the use of the pro shop, sorry, allow the attorney to clarify the lease agreement with Northern Divide and add a clause that defines the months of operation for the pro shop.
And, 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 thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. A second by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
I was going to third it, but...
Okay.
Did, did that include the clarification of the extension?
No.
No. I will move that we extend the deadline by five days as requested by staff.
Thank you. Motion by Counselor Johnson to extend the deadline from the 15th to the, to the 20th based on recommendation and request by our council, supported by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We got there. Thank you. Britt?
Thank you. Back to item 9.1F. It was moved and supported to approve the resolution entering into an agreement for asphaltic, asphaltic concrete services, which is normally called crack ceiling, with Northwest Asphalt Maintenance for up to 20,000 feet at $1.17 per foot.
Okay. Thank you. Moved by Counselor Johnson to approve, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Bearaboo, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution to purchase up to 500 tons of crushed rock salt from Compass Minerals America Incorporated at $96.57 per ton.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Our library director, Jody, was at their meeting to discuss the request to purchase book bins for the children's room at the library. It was moved and supported to authorize this purchase in the amount of $20,486.89, which would be utilizing the remaining money from the fire that happened in 2009, I believe, two grants and some crossover funds.
Moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The discussion regarding the purchasing policy and the credit card policy for city staff, it was moved and supported to allow staff to update the language regarding item 3.2.6 in the credit card policy, to allow staff other than the cardholder to use the credit cards when necessary.
Moved. Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Freedleeb, is there any further discussion? Counselor Freedleeb?
As authorized by department head.
As authorized by the department head.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
We had received a request from Revive Virginia for participation in the Goodman Farewell Concert Project. It was moved and supported to direct staff to bring proposal to the city council with the funding options and the legality of the proposed contribution for the Goodman Farewell Concert Project. And I do believe Colleen has information for us as well.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, it's, I'm just going to... ..........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Well, thank you, Colleen, very much. Okay. So, what was the amount requested?
$1,000. And then I did speak with Betsy Olivanti, who is the one that's been chairpersoness, and they are seeking an IRRB Culture and Truism Grant that is available in June. They have applied for an ARAC Regional Arts Coalition, ARAC, grant already, and they are going to be applying to other like-minded organizations such as the city and VIDA for additional funds.
So, is asking for, they're, they're going to ask the city and VIDA as well?
They did. Yes.
They did?
Yes.
And did VIDA act?
Correct. They did.
They approve $1,000?
They approved $1,000. Correct.
So, that's kind of a city function, isn't it? That $1,000, or is that separate?
That is separate. VIDA is a separate entity.
Thank you for the clarification, Britt. Okay. So, we have a ruling by our, our city attorney that we, we can, if we wish to do so, act upon other requests to participate, to provide some funding for this project, which is the Goodman Farewell Concert Project. Counselor Freedleeb?
I just, Sheri, do we have a line item budgeted for donations and contributions?
Not necessarily, no. We are not a philanthic organization.
There is one line, there is one line item in our budget, and that's a $500 donation to the...
Youth.
Youth in Action.
Hmm. So, this would come from where, then?
This would come either from, and I know everybody cringes when I say contingency fund, but I do have a balance, running balance of what's been spent out of there. There is about $92,000 left in there, so you could handle $1,000.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Sheri. Thank you, Counselor Freedleeb. So, this is information that was brought forth in the discussion part of the Committee of the House meeting, and we do have clarification from our legal counsel about, we do have the authority to do that if we wish to act, and this is a time where we, we can act on it. So, first, we'll go to Counselor Johnson, and then over to Counselor Paulson. Counselor Johnson?
I would move that we give $1,000 to be a part of the community effort for the concert and writing of the opus, what they're calling it.
Okay. Counselor Johnson moves to, to approve a investment of $1,000 for the Goodman Farewell Concert Project. Is there support for that? Is there support for that? Is there support for that? Counselor Bearaboo supports. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I am 100% in support of the project, but I'm concerned that we'd be taking any dollars at all out of our contingency fund when we've got streets and alleys that $1,000 would go a long way to fill a pothole that's three feet deep. So, is there any other fund that we could take any, I, I won't vote for this if it's coming out of the contingency fund.
Sheri?
And I will have to ask the city administrator if we can take $1,000 out of her Economic Development Fund.
Of what?
I have an Economic Development Fund that we use for economic development purposes. Usually, it's a project or something. I don't have, oh, I do have projects on the radar. It's not necessarily earmarked for anything. So, it's community development, economic development, usually advertising, billboards, things like that, that we take that money out of.
Okay.
How much is in that balance?
We budgeted $127,500. We allocated $50,000 to VIDA and $77,500 for the economic development.
A question for you, Sheri. I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I, I don't use the mayor's, you know, budget much of anything, and, and get a couple trips of lizards here and there, and so, I mean, I, I don't know if that's a allowable expenditure from the bud, the mayor's budget, but if it is, you know, I just prefer to take it out of there. Sheri?
Would have to make a motion to do that.
But I, there's money in that budget to take it because I haven't used it, or at least any of it, so. All right. Thank you. So, Counselor Freedleeb?
For the sake of conversation, again, it's like, I, I am fully in favor of a celebratory type of concert and opus, so to speak, with regard to celebration of the Goodman Auditorium, but again, I want to reiterate the fact that the school board has voted to not demolish the technical building, so the Goodman Auditorium will remain standing and intact for, we know not how many years yet to come because there is no money, and money that will exceed far more than $1,000 to demolish that building. So, I think it's a little premature to be doing this, but at the same time, if they're able to pull this off, and they're going to have the facilities and electricity and utilities available to accommodate the public, then I'm fully in favor of this, but I still think in my mind and heart, it's a little premature, so.
Okay. Thank you.[1590.61] Okay, thank you. And so in answer to Counselor Paulson's question, the money could come out of the mayor's budget, so it wouldn't come out of the contingency fund, will come under any other fund associated with that. So Counselor Beyondich?
Would that have to be a separate, a new motion?
Would be, had to be a motion, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
I would like to amend my motion to specify it's coming out of the mayor's fund.
Counselor Johnson moves to amend his motion that, to approve the $1,000 contribution to be taken out of the mayor's budget. Is there support for that?
I supported the original. I think I did.
You support the amendment to have that money come out of there?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Discussion was had with ASME regarding the Lead Recreation Assistant job description. This was coming from the April 19, 2022 meeting. After much discussion and a failed motion, it was moved and supported to approve the proposed job description for the Lead Recreation Assistant.
Thank you. So from the, from the Committee of the Home Mea- I realize I'll wait till you're done. From the Committee of the Home Meeting was a recommendation to approve the job description for the Lead Recreation Assistant. So it's brought here for, for official council action. So looking for a motion action. What's that, Pam?
It'd have a special meeting.
A special, yeah, a closed special meeting. Right, okay, thank you. I, thank you for the clarification. So Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Based on, on what Amanda said about relooking at the job description and making sure that what we want in there is what we want in there, I will move to table both the job description and the wage until further discussion can be had.
Okay, motion by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Is there support?
Mayor, I'll support because I've been against the salary anyway, so I'll support.
All right, it's supported by Counselor Birbou. Is there any further discussion?
We'll have a discussion on a tabling motion.
I'm sorry, was, was that to move the table?
Correct.
Oh, I apologize for that. It was move the table. I, okay, move the table, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 9.1L is, approve the resolution to hire James Hernandez as a patrol officer?
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
I'll support, Mayor.
We had our dual support. So support by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Moved and supported to approve the resolution to hire Tyler Rooney as a patrol officer?
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, and once again, supported by Counselor Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to request Essentia Health to come to a city council meeting to discuss and review Essentia's long-term plan for the city of Virginia.
Moved.
Moved to do that by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the request from Essentia Health, Virginia, for a letter of support for their proposed emergency department renovation.
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Paulson. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
I will not be supporting this. We just sold them a building for $86,000 because it came back in a negative assessment, and they want to put $2 million into it, and they still haven't told us what their long-term plan is. So I'm not, I understand the need for the beds. I understand it's mental, may as much mental health awareness. I understand all of that, but I can't support putting $2 million into a building that they squabbled over $86,000 for, so I will not be supporting this letter.
Okay, so it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Birbou?
Well, I'm going to be not very nice about this one because we have to work and do things at the federal level to get dollars, Steve, from this. If we don't support, those dollars dry up and they disappear. From experience, when you're looking for street dollars down the road from the feds, if you don't support one negativity from a city council on that, we'll cut you off from any federal money. I'm going to guarantee you that. We cannot cut this off. We need to do it. Period. You don't go after federal money without total support from your city.
Okay, well, thank you, Counselor Birbou. So it has been moved in, has it moved at all? It's been moved and supported? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Notes to approve the letter of support for the federal infra grant with the Minnesota Department of Transportation.
No, this was for the Essentia.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So I apologize. Read that back again. I didn't see it here in the notes.
Moved by Counselor Paulson, supported by Counselor Freely, to approve the request from Essentia Health, Virginia, for a letter of support for the proposed emergency department renovation.
I, I'm sorry. I was one thing ahead, so thank you. So, so again, it's to approve the request from Essentia Health, Virginia, for a letter of support for the proposed emergency department renovation. So, right?
Correct.
And we voted?
There was
Kind of.
Yeah, we have not done a roll call yet.
Let's, let's vote once again, just to get a clarification of the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you. Please roll call, Pam. Thank you.
Birbou? Freely? Paulson?
Aye.
Beyondich?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Baranzelli? Cuffy?
Aye. Motion passes 6-1. Thank you. Britt?
It was moved and supported to approve the letter, letter of support for the federal infra grant with MINDA for transportation improvements related to the Rockbridge School.
Thank you.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
I'll support, Mayor.
A support by Counselor Birbou. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Because of the primary and general elections this year, we need to move our city council meetings. It was moved and supported to approve setting the council meetings for August, for August 18, 2022, and November will be November 9, 2022, both beginning at 5:30 PM.
Moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson. Is there support? Support, support by Counselor Baranzelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve staff to send a letter to IBC International to inform them that the city of Virginia is denying their request to waive exclusivity contract for our bumper cars.
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by
Or-
Counselor Freely. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
No further items from that meeting.
May I, may I add to, like, item S, we did get some information from our Park and Rec Director regarding the greenhouse. Could we bring him forward, and then, and then we'll go to Counselor Paulson. Could we bring this forward? Oh, okay. So I think there's some issues with one of, a portion of the, of the greenhouse. We need to take a look at it, and it just happened during the storm system. So we might as well talk about it here a little bit. If we have to refer or defer, we could do that. Brian, thanks for coming and patiently waiting in the back.
Thank you. Just what we need is another long discussion here this evening, but here I am. As you're aware, yesterday morning, we had a nice little storm that blew through town, literally blew through town. We had 19 trees within the city, park system and boulevard system that felt that were blown down due to that storm. Also, the greenhouse sustained some damage. Now, for your benefit and the benefit of those listening at home, it was not the main greenhouse, and it was not the northern greenhouse. Those are the two greenhouses that are utilized by the public for the, their enjoyment and that they have access to. It was actually the south greenhouse that sustained the roof damage. Now, the south greenhouse is essentially only used for storage, and the friends of the greenhouse utilize that for wintering of plants during the wintertime. The roof was, was substantially damaged in it, and throughout the course of the day, had Bill Cole, our building inspector, out to review the building and have done some other digging. At the end of the day, I received a, the inspection report from our engineering office, and he is issuing a condemnation letter for that building. The south greenhouse, not the entire greenhouse, just the southern green, southern greenhouse, because there are three buildings as part of that complex. So the building that is not utilized by the public is the building that has the damage and needs to be condemned. Prior to my arrival here in 2017, DSGW did a study and came up with a proposal for repairing and replacing the roofs on the north greenhouse and the south greenhouse. In 2017, the estimate to repair the roof on the south greenhouse was $76,240. For obvious reasons, the city did not take action at that point, but today, we are at the point that the building is not safe to be inhabited. So I'm coming to you today for a discussion, I guess, as far as what direction the city council desires us to go in. At this point, that building will have to be closed, but do we remove that structure, or do we continue to look for other ways to replace that structure? For example, we know Canaries just did an addition of a greenhouse onto their building. That was a six-figure addition that they did. There are some other less expensive options that I can research, but they are not commercial grade. They are more of a residential grade, and I do not know how they would meet our needs, or if it is the desire of the city council to expend funds essentially for a greenhouse storage-type facility, whereas we could utilize other storage facilities within the city, and we really do need more storage in our park system.
One question, Brian, before we go to the rest of the council. The question I have is always is, I mean, is there a recovery of, of insurance component to that?
We have submitted an insurance claim.
So based upon that, you know, maybe those funds can be utilized to, to find an alternative way in which to provide the greenhouse some additional storage, et cetera. So just as a thought process moving forward. Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Brian, the plants that are wintering are frog members' plants. They, they pay a nominal fee, very nominal fee, to be able to use that space over the winter. There's no city plants or city
Correct.
Anything being stored in there, so.
That is correct. And this past year, there were 10 members of the public that utilized that to winter their, out, their exterior plants inside that greenhouse.
And it was full?
It was.
It was very full. Okay, thank you. I guess I would make a motion to, for the staff to do some serious research and see what are actually viable, viable options for us by moving forward.
Okay, thank you. It's a motion by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify, I'm sorry. Oh, that was the last minute light on. I looked and it was off, and then she pointed and it was on.
I just wanted to say
Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say a quick shout out and thank you to the Park and Rec Department and the team clearing out all those trees. That's a lot of work. So I know it was a bad storm, and thank you so much for your department.
We hope by the end of the week to have gotten all of the trees that have fallen taken care of. Obviously, that means that everything that was on the park crew's agenda for this week is on the agenda for next week. So we ask the public, public to continue to express their patience with us and being a little bit slower than we would prefer to be.
Thank you. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Okay, move on to item 10. Commission Liaison Reports. Does anyone have a commission liaison report they'd like to give this evening? Hearing and seeing none. We'll move to item 11. Department Head Reports. We'll start left to right here. Anything else for the agenda, Britt?
We have received the resignation of Chief Alan Lewis. Need to appoint somebody as an acting chief in Alan's absence so that I can notify the Department of Public Safety who our chief is.
Thank you. And normally, we've, 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 historically, and maybe it's in the contract too, that, you know, in the absence of the chief or the assistant chief takes over the duties and responsibilities in the interim. So I think you're asking for a formal motion to appoint Assistant Chief Fedrickson
Yes.
as acting fire chief until, until we decide what we're going to do with the fire chief position. So looking for that motion.
Moved.
As interim fire chief.
Or-
Moved by Counselor Freely and supported by Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Britt.
I do have one other item. That's okay?
Yep, let's go.
Starting on or after May 16, very close to May 16 is when road restrictions come off. We will be starting road construction, and people on the area of Third Avenue from First Street North, past the Columbia Richly Towers, have noticed that the barricades are out there, and they are starting construction in a couple of weeks. They do expect to be completely done with everything by early August, contingent upon weather. If the weather stays really nice, so it'll go really, really fast. The other portion of the project will be Southern Drive, closest to the Humane Society and Waste Water Treatment Plant. That'll be done same time. We have two different, same contractor, two different crews coming in, doing the work at the same time. They plan to be out of there by August as well.
Britt, thank you very much, Britt. Next?
I have no formal report, other than what I've shared with you today.
Thank you, Colleen. Pam, anything?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Please.
Election filings will open on Tuesday, May 17, at 8:00 AM. There are three council positions and one mayor seat up for election this year.
Very good. Thank you. Sheri, anything?
Yes, just wanted to let you know that the 2021 audit is being wrapped up by the auditors, and hopefully we'll have them here before you for a question and answer session.
Very good.
They are coming on. Oh, there you go.
And, and we're looking forward to that presentation.
Mayor, may I ask Pam a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So does that mean the filing doesn't go into June this year like normal, just the two weeks in May?
Correct. May 17 to the 31st.
Because it usually goes one, one week in May and one week in June. Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
We'll move to our planning and development guru, John Sullivan. John, anything to report? I know you, I know you've got a lot on your plate.
I do, Mayor, but I don't have anything to report tonight, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, we'll go to council reports. Any council has a report they'd like to give? I'm sorry? Department head report, Brian Silber, our Park and Rec Director, please.
Didn't think you'd be done with me that easy, did you?
So I was mistaken.
Wanted to report to the council that this week at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, we have 37 different events that are scheduled that are revenue generating events for us. Two weeks ago, when I was hearing, you guys looked at me with awe and disbelief of what we were going, so I thought I would reiterate that this week is 37. Next week is 42 different events. Now, that number does include ice rental, ice rentals. So we've got lots of things going on at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. Switching gears to the park because I do do something outside of that building occasionally. You guys may be very well aware of this wonderful organization called the Blandon Foundation. They have a program that individuals can go through and get training on. Then those individuals are able to approve for grants or apply for grants with a nonprofit. I've been approached by two different individuals that have been through that training, that want to apply for a grant that will directly impact our Park and Recreation Department. And I'm going to ask you guys to allow me to like, to write letters of support for both of those grant applications with when and if they are needed. The first grant application is being proposed by Councilor Stephen Johnson, which would be developing, which would be a joint program between the library and the park system, developing a program inside the greenhouse that is tailored for children. The second grant application is being proposed by Ryan Carlson of Range Office for the addition of a kayak and canoe rental kiosk system to be implemented at the Silver Lake Beach. So I would appreciate the council's permission to write letters of support with, when, and if needed for either of those grants.
Okay, thank you. We're going, we're going to make a motion to give blanket approval, hopefully, for you to do this. I'm looking for council action here. Counselor Beyondich?
I would make that motion, and I think it's a fabulous idea to utilize Silver Lake. Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Beyondich. Is there support? Support by Counselor Freely to, to give permission to our Park Director to write letters on these, on the grant programs for those two improvement projects. So thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I have a couple items that I'd like to bring up. First, for Brian, I got called by a couple of citizens that were walking around Alcott Park all the time. They thank you for keeping it nice and clean, and they're, they've expressed their disgust with the people who are parking down there by the Little League fields, and, you know, it's still wet there, and they're parking right on the grass, right in the mud. I mean, there's plenty of room for them to park on the, on the street because it's one-way. I think it's just a habit. And so I did go up there, take a look, and it was a couple vehicles right in the muck. I mean, their right tires are right in there. So there's a way that we could maybe notify these people that, you know, try to stay on the roadway system itself, because there's plenty of room for people to get by. So thank you for that. And just a reminder, calendar parking changes in effect a week, two weeks at a time. So maybe check the, the newspaper, call our city clerk, come to the city hall. It's posted. Calendar parking signs in the summer, we have signs posted around town. So if you have any questions about calendar parking and the changes that are affecting, I think it affects May 15. Is that correct? Well, it's already in effect, May 1, so I'm way behind the eight ball. But just a reminder, so for those who, you could comply with the, with the, with the request of that policy. So, thank you. And then there was a request, and I, I'll ask it to skip past. And then, there was a request, and I, I'll ask this be passed on to, well, Britt, you sent me this email, and you sent to all the councils about the citywide cleanup, why we don't do that, so I would just take a look at Park and Rec and take a look and discuss that, maybe for our next committee of the whole meeting to see the feasibility of that and the cost of the pass and those kind of things. And the last one thing I have is that, I, we got this from, I don't know if all the councillors received this or not, came from Eric Jonison, our battalion chief for the fire department, he's a part of the, he's the team leader for the Arrowhead USR, the USAR team, so that's the rescue team where you got that big grant, that the chief got, this big grant, the prior chief, for putting the others team to do specialized training, specialized extraction, whether it's water or confined space or whatever the case may be. And so they've been working really hard on training, they have a good team that's put together, and we did get information that the state fire marshal office has officially recognized the Arrowhead Regional USR Team as a Minnesota task force too. So that means that, that, that it's recognition of it's a state, what they call a, a place for them to, what am I trying to say, it's a, well, it's, it's a resource that the state has for us to use. There are only two USR teams in the state of Minnesota, one north, one south, and ours has been recognized as a qualified, certified, professional organization, and they'll be using our USR team moving forward. Obviously, when we respond to these things, they're, they're all, all these are, are, you know, you can refund your money, you know, and get, so I think that's a good thing, you know, we get reimbursed from that for all things go, just like if we get calls from the DNR or from the Forest Street Department regarding use of our ambulances or fire equipment. So kudos to our staff for putting that together and moving forward, so thank you. Okay, is there anything else that has to come before the council today? Yes, Councilor Johnson?
I apologize, I had to step out.
Yeah, go ahead.
One, it is public, or it is Mental Health Awareness Month, everybody has mental health, it's important to take care of yourself mentally, physically, emotionally. The cupola will be lit green in honor of Mental Health Month for the rest of the month, starting tonight, and Deputy Chief Nicola, I'm surprised he didn't mention this, that Thursday, May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, is kids, cops, and cars. K-9 Chase will be there, police officers, police vehicles, special equipment, all outside, all free to the public, and these are, it's not just our police department, it's range-wide police departments and other services, so from four thirty to eight thirty, I know I'll be bringing my herd over there for sure on Thursday evening, so just want to make sure folks are aware that it's a great event, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, yes. Okay, hope everybody goes to that thing. It's a great event, the police department does a great job. Now, this is different than National Light Out, was good fun for all the kids, so bring your family, your kids there too, so, thank you. Anything else that anybody would like to make an announcement before we adjourn? Seeing, hearing, none, thank you very much, we will adjourn to our next council meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, May the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, right here in the council chambers. Thank you, everybody, we stand adjourned. Good night.